Good morning. We have already formed a quorum, so I declare the meeting open. So please invite the deputations and the individuals who are attending today's meeting to come in and take their seat.
Good morning, Secretary. 应该不是的 傅小姐，不然会后先被
好，各位早晨
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome the officials, the deputations, as well as the individuals for your attendance. For today's meeting, we'll continue to listen to your views in relation to the provision of free kindergarten education. If you like, you may want to put on the earpiece and then choose the channel of your choice. Channel zero is the floor, channel one is Cantonese, and channel two is for English. Now for today's meeting, all together, we have got seventy-four deputations or individuals in attendance. We're going to have two sessions. The secretariat has already forwarded the submissions received earlier on to members of the panel as well as the administration. I just want to remind the deputations, representatives, and individuals that for the written submissions as well as the oral submissions that you make today will not be protected by the Electrical Powers and Privileges Ordinance. Secretary, Mr. Ng, this is the second special meeting on the same issue. So before they speak, would you like to speak very briefly? Please be brief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I must say that I'm very grateful to the deputations and individuals who are attending today's meeting to talk about the provision of free kindergarten education. We'll continue to listen to you very carefully. We will consider the views collected last time as well as the views that you expressed today. Maybe there are a couple of points that I would like to state very briefly. First of all, we are certainly determined to start free kindergarten education in a practical manner. We've never deviated from such a goal. We are going to set up a committee. The purpose of the committee isn't so much about whether to do it or not, but rather how. We entirely agree that kindergarten is a very important stage in young children's education. That is not compulsory, but is to be the cornerstone of future education. And it cannot, we cannot ignore, we cannot afford to ignore it. For the membership, as was the timetable of the Committee on KG Education, you don't need to worry. We are going to set it up in April ASAP. And we are going to include stakeholders in the field of KG education. And we'll also have representatives from other sectors. We are going to get school principals, teachers, school sponsoring bodies, the academia, as well as the parents, to sit on the committee. There will be a number of task groups under the committee as well. We are going to get their input on how to take the idea forward. We'll look at the objectives and the purpose of having KGs, the mode of subsidy, as was the different needs of half-day and whole-day kindergartens. And then the class ratios, teacher qualifications, the quality assurance mechanism, and parent education are all the topics that will be visited. They're all close to our heart, and we will be giving priority to this matter. But at the same time, we cannot afford to be hasty, and we mustn't take the matter lightly. And in fact, before the establishment of the committee, we mustn't hastily jump to any conclusions. We expect that the committee can complete its task within two years' time and come back with further specific recommendations for the Education Bureau. But it doesn't mean that in the next two years KG education will come to a standstill. The committee will certainly look at issues that can be taken forward in the short term or the medium term. The administration would also tie in with the efforts as much as possible. Once again, I express my gratitude towards you, and I will listen to you very carefully. Thank you, Secretary. I'm going to invite the deputations and individuals to speak one by one. Each of you will have three minutes to speak. When the buzzer is activated, please stop and try to keep your statement concise. If you have anything further to add, you may do so in writing. First of all, I'd like to invite you, the Annunciation Catholic Kindergarten, to speak, Ms. Pang. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members. I'm Pang from Annunciation Catholic Kindergarten. All the staff and the parents are in support of the eight points of request from the Alliance to Fight for Fifteen Years Free KG Education. We want a full subsidy for KG education. There must be a salary scale for teachers, there must be a career development for the KG teachers. We have the voucher scheme, but then for KGs to have the qualification, we have to enhance ourselves. And then at least the teachers must be certificate holders. There are teachers who are very dedicated, there are principals who are dedicated, and they spend their evenings to pay for their courses so as to enhance themselves. This is because they're enthusiastic and they love the children. Now five years have already passed, ninety percent of the teachers have become qualified. Some of them are degree holders, bachelor degrees and master's degrees. So our qualifications are not lower than those in the primary education or secondary education sector. But then the administration would like us to enhance ourselves, but the administration doesn't listen to us, and the government is not committed, and there is no full subsidy. Even in the latest policy address, we don't see any long-term planning. The government rather would spend hundreds of millions of dollars to sponsor the elite students to go overseas to study. We haven't got a, we haven't got job security, we haven't got any proper salary pay scale, so we can't expect them to stay in the sector. Well, as part of the educational reform, we have been given affirmation that this is the cornerstone for future education. But I don't think that we have seen much action on the part of the government. There must be salary scale, there must be full subsidy, and the government must also make sure that every young child must have the equal opportunity to receive education. Teachers should be given recognition, paid fairly, and given fair treatment. Thank you. Next, Ms. Chen Ah Ye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Secretary. Good morning, PAs and colleagues in the same sector. I have already been working in the KG education sector for thirty years. I've never left the sector for one day, so I can speak on behalf of the experienced KG teachers. When I first joined the KG sector, I learned from the experienced teachers. We've been asking the administration to attach importance to the KG sector. Now even now, we are still asking the administration to pay us due respect. And KG education should become part of the formal educational system, which should be given the equal treatment. We've never been given the due respect, but KG teachers are still dedicated to our jobs despite the very humiliating pay terms. We respect the children, we also respect ourselves. Despite the very difficult conditions, we've been trying our best to seek further qualifications. We hope we are best equipped to teach the young children. Well, education is a basic entitlement on the part of the young children. How come they've only got twelve years free education? Our professionalism tells us that education is a continuous process, not just about a series or studying. In fact, all the educators have told us that it is important as far as the years between zero and six are concerned. We must have vision in our educational policy. Therefore, the government must subsidize KG education fully, then must undertake that in two years' time, we must introduce fifteen years free education. We don't see many decades in a person's life, and I don't know how many more decades we will have to wait to get this. Why is it that we still have a salary scale? Why is it that for primary teachers, when they first enter the sector, they get paid twenty thousand dollars, but for us, not yet fifteen thousand dollars? It is indeed a humiliating pay. We haven't deserted our jobs because we love the children, and also we know that education is important for the growing up of our children. Therefore, we strongly ask for a qualification framework for KG teachers, and there must be a fund to support teachers' education. Please also support teachers in seeking further qualifications. Teacher quality must be enhanced, and you must help us so as to ease the pressure to have further studies. And you must make sure that you can attract the best talents, and please also incorporate the local elements in the education.
I'm the Hong Kong Kowloon and New Territories Kindergarten Education Investment Association. Mr. Chairman, I'm Kwan Pick Kuen. Early childhood education is the basis for whole-person development for the whole life. It's very important. Every child should have the right for basic education. So pre-primary education should be part of the education process, so there's before subsidy. And we should make reference to the subvention mode for the primary and secondary schools. And some KGs can keep the private operation, and we can promote a fifteen-year free education. We should have a roadmap, timetable, and transitional measures so that we can have a professional system for the teachers and for the children so that the children can have a balanced and quality education. The quality, early childhood education requires good teachers. Eight percent of the teachers get diplomas, and actually forty percent get degrees, and some get master's degrees. But the pay is not fair in terms of structure, and the whole education system, the pay levels are very low. This will do a blow to the morale, and the career prospects are uncertain, and there's weight stage of futures. So there should be qualification, structure, recognition, and there should be a pay scale so that we can attract people and keep the talents. Now the budget says that there will be four hundred and eighty million dollars for brilliant students to study overseas for early childhood education. But some people may not actually go into this field, so we are rather disappointed, and we object to that. Government should make good use of the resources so that there can be diversified channels for development. We can make reference to the secondary and primary schools, and we should lower the teacher-student ratio, which enhances the teacher structure and which can employ accounting clerks. We can stabilize the teaching force. This will be conducive to the well-being of the children. We should have good paid treatment, and there should be continuing professional developments, prospects. Senior teachers can provide quality education. I hope that the secretary can listen to our views and follow up on the views of the sector so that within two years, we can promote the fifteen-year free education. Thank you. Next, Ms. Chen Ji Man. Mr. Chairman, Secretary.
I'm from St. Mary's Kindergarten of the Catholic Church. I would like to express our views concerning fifteen-year free education. We fight for fifteen-year free education, and we agree with the alliances to fight for this fifteen-year free education and their eight-point aspiration. We agree with paragraph nine of paper number two of the electrical paper. There should be a pay structure for the KG teachers. For the resources of KG, actually, is not much. Twenty-twelve, Hong Kong Annual Report, page three, five, eight. Actually, KG education only occupies four point nine percent of expenses of education. Now, twenty-twelve, many scholars and many people published reports about KG education. They invited one thousand four hundred and forty-five teachers for interview. Twenty-one percent agree that the pay does not reflect their qualifications, and eighty-two point three percent feel that the treatment is lower than that for secondary and primary students. And for five point one percent of teachers say that they will leave this field, and thirty percent say that they are undecided. Now for this weight stage and this instability, it reflects that teachers are not satisfied with their status quo and they do not feel respected. Now, Secretary, if we do not have a stable teaching force, how can we provide quality education continuously? We hope that the secretary can formulate the pay structure for the teachers. Teachers across the matter in terms of upgrading quality of education. If we have a pay structure, we can retain talents. As for the Maslow Multi-Level Diagram, if we have basic needs, then we can have higher gratification, and then the teachers can really display quality education teaching. So we should formulate the pay structure to stabilize the teaching force. Thank you. Next, Ms. Lau Ta Oi. Mr. Chairman, Secretary.
On behalf of the Hong Kong Christian Kindergarten Teachers Association, I would like to express our views. We agree with the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance of Fifteen-Year Free Education. First, we should reduce the teacher-student ratio. According to twenty-twelve EDP Manual, it says that we have the mission and commitment to take care of students. And chapter seven, about international confidence, it says that there's a need to take care of the children, and education and care are very important elements. So we should really deal with the ratio properly. Now for ages two to three, the ratio is one to ten. For ages four to six is one to fifteen. We should really implement that. As for reducing the ratio, I should not include the principals and senior teachers. Now, the previous four speakers mentioned the qualification ladder and also pay structure. In two-seven, we had the voucher scheme. Up to now, the standard pay scale has been scrapped. Now, this ladder actually protects the KG teachers. This will make teachers think that they have a lifelong career. Pay structure is very important. But at present, the in-service teachers and the prospective teachers feel they have an uncertain future. Now, the permanent secretary of the EDP said that for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, now about the assessment framework, now for those holding diplomas or above qualification for twenty-twelve and twenty thirteen, fourteen, the annual wage stage may be fifteen percent. Twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, more than two hundred. Thirteen, more than two hundred and fifty. Thirteen to fourteen, it will be a wage stage of hundred and thirty-odd people. Now, we have the policy address, it says that you allocate four hundred and eighty million dollars for bright students to study early childhood education. Now, for our sector, how can we attract people to come to us to have lifelong career? I hope that the secretary and the administration really expedite the implementation of the pay structure. As for other views, our submission is separate from the tree. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Chee Ho Ye. Mr. Chairman, Secretary. I'm a parent. I'm also one of the personnel to train up children. Now, childhood education is very important, is for lifelong growth. We're talking about pre-primary education, but doesn't mean that it should not be regularized as part of the basic education. It's very important for children in terms of inspiring the children. Now, many parents are concerned about pre-primary education. They want to choose a good schools, and they ask the children to learn different skills. So it shows that the parents hope to nurture children. Now, according to the census, for age three point five, the schooling proportion is ninety percent. So the government should really tie in with the social situation. Now, the quality of pre-primary education is very important for children's growth. Quality education ensures that the children can be taken good care of. So for quality education, it's very important for Hong Kong, and the professional development of children is across the matter. So the KG teachers, they should have professional knowledge, there should be continuous development. We should have adequate resources, then the KG teachers can really develop themselves. Fifteen-year free education can really help the parents and the children to take care of basic education, and we can make use of the opportunity to upgrade the qualifications of teachers, and then we can have a sound training system, there could be a good qualifications ladder, we can keep and attract talents for the teaching force, and we can upgrade professionalism of the teaching force. It's a win-win situation. Children are the major pillars of society, and pre-primary education is the cornerstone of their growth. So we can have quality education, this will be very good for them. Otherwise, the children will become a burden for society. Age zero to ten are very important for the growth of the children, and the investment of pre-primary education will have greater return than investments in primary and secondary education. If we do not attach importance to pre-primary education, you are lacking behind the development of society. Many people petitioned twenty years ago, now they are adults. At that time, the teachers did not have professional qualifications, now many now have good qualifications. Some have a bachelor's degree, some are master's degree holders. In terms of children, parents, education, and society, the Hong Kong government is responsible for developing early childhood education. Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Chen Mei Lan. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, and the staff of the secretariat, you're commendable. I'm Chen Mei Lan. I've been in the field for twenty-six years. Experience tells me that the step of development of early childhood education is very slow. Now, for this kind of pre-primary education, it's kind of a Cinderella. You cannot be recognized with proper status and treatment. Actually, pre-primary education is worse than Cinderella. We hope that we can have a prince who will have the breakthrough. The CE, at this election manifesto, said that there will be fifteen-year free education. But now we have a policy address which is procrastinating the matter. I hope that the secretary, as you said just now, within two years, we can really implement fifteen-year free education. We need a long-term blueprint for pre-primary education. Hope that the committee to be established will have a good representation of the sector, then there will be representative. We don't want laymen to lead professionals, and we don't want to be Cinderella anymore. We hope to have professional autonomy, we hope to seek well-being of the children. We fight for fifteen-year free education. Now, long-term blueprint for education includes a full subsidy for early childhood education. There should be proper planning for school premises and facilities so that the children can have proper environments to develop. There should be localized education research so that there will be a professional ladder to train up the teachers. And we expect that we can have the professional training ladder, then we can do it according to their qualifications, and then we can set the pay packages, and they can be respected. We should lower the teacher-student ratio. We can have colleges in Hong Kong which can train up professional developments of children. The government does not have to send brilliant students overseas to study this sort of matter. We should fight for the well-being and the rights of the KG teachers and the children. We hope that within this term of government, you can really implement fifteen-year free education. I hope that you can really make contribution to the children. And next, Ms. Yun Wei Ling.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Secretary. I'm Yun Wei Ling. I'm a trainer of early childhood education. I agree with the scraping of the voucher system, and we should have free education. Now, paper number one of electrical paper, page two, paragraph nine, I have some comments. For two oh oh seven, two oh eight, we had the voucher scheme. Now, many stakeholders think that there will be adverse impact, impact on the parents and the students. For the voucher scheme, you did not consider the operational situation of the schools, so there's unfair situation. As for pre-primary education and its ecology, actually, it's not student-based. For example, premature copying in terms of learning and primary school protesters adopted for kindergartens. Actually, the core value is student-based or children-based, so that they can develop their potential, they can nurture good habits, and they can train up their communication abilities, and they can solve problems. Now, that is a good preparation for lifelong learning. So information temptation of free education is having far-reaching ramifications. Page four of electrical paper number one, the last point. Now, the committee says that it will require adequate time for as well. Now, I have my comments. According to the planning department, according to the census projection for twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one, now from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one, in these ten years, for ages zero to four, the number of people will decrease. From twenty twelve, more than two hundred and sixty thousand people, for twenty twenty-one, it will be two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The drop is one point four percent. For those aged over sixty-five, is an increase For those aged over sixty-five is an increase of eighty-two point seven percent. So about the government, I worried about this kind of projection. Now, in recent years, we see Singapore as a competitor. Whether we're talking about the housing policies and GDP, we compare ourselves with them. Now for Singapore, it will help couples to increase the birth rates. But for Hong Kong, we have more than sixty billion dollars of surplus and more than, where we have a massive amount of reserves. I hope that these governments should not repeat the mistakes of the past government. We should promote fifteen-year free education. And next, Miss Lam Nai Wah. I have two children at the pre-primary stage. Well, I support fifteen-year free education. There should be full subsidy and we should reduce student-teacher ratio. For my two children at the age of two, they could be arranged to have education at that age. Now, caring at school is different from caring at the family. Just like having meals in Hong Kong or rather in the family, you have the care of parents or grandparents. But in the school, the teachers can help the student with table manners or meal manners. And the teachers can help the children to collect the the cutlery etcetera in terms of taking meals. So this will train up responsibility for the children. Now, learning and has to be practiced. So pre-primary education and caring in parallel, just like studying medicine, you have to do practicums. But school is a good value, a good value for practicum. Now, many parents are working, they have to take care of the children. And students can have whole-day schooling. Today, I'm a teacher for for pre-primary education. Now, some students have to adjust to new environment when they go to school. Some may cry if they do not get adopted. The ratio is one to fourteen. The teacher can take care of them, but it's hard for the teacher to hug them, to take care of them in a greater detail. And the principal and senior teachers and other teachers may help. But the teachers have to take care of the need for the parents. Some parents are very concerned about the new entrance to school, that is their children. And they are worried and they talk to the parents. Now, for pre-primary education today is different from the past. Through activities, the teachers can allow the children to solve problems, to learn, and the teachers will guide them. And the children will have a proper learning attitude. We have to tie in with the needs of society. So reducing the ratio of teacher and student will give rise to quality teaching environments and then we can hire teaching assistants and they will assist the teachers. So we should really have a lower teacher ratio in the schools. And we should agree that we should lower the teacher-student ratio. Thank you.
Next one, Miss Lao Ta Po. Good morning. I'm a so, I'm a parent. And my child is studying in a half-day KG. I want him to study in a whole-day KG, but then after the voucher, I still have to pay around two thousand dollars per month. And that is studying in a nonprofit-making KG. I'm very fortunate to have my mother taking care of my child. So my child can study in a half-day KG. But then for double-income families, they don't have relatives to rely on to take care of their child. So what can they do? Now, the government has been encouraging people to give birth and but in face of long work hours. And we can't afford to send our children to half-day KGs. Now, the government says that the child has to be raised using four million dollars. And the government rather spends money to send outstanding students to study overseas. So and they are not willing to spend that amount on subsidizing kindergarten education. And people are not willing to give birth to children these days and the population is aging. So the parents don't have a choice in the society today. I think early childhood education is at the core of education in Hong Kong. And children should have a balanced development. And the government should ensure that whole-day and half-day KGs are developing in a healthy manner and both of them should be given full subsidy. I hope that the government should model after the expenditure model for primary and secondary schools and give full subsidy to KGs. So that parents of KGs have real choices. Now, parents should have the choice to send their children either to full-day or half-day KGs based on their own financial means, so that they can get appropriate support. Without fifteen-year free education, how can we ensure that children can get into good primary and secondary schools and enroll into universities? Thank you. And next, Miss Chan Yu Wah. Chairman, Secretary, Piers. Good morning. I'm a whole-day KG teacher. I agree with what colleagues said. Fifteen-year free education should be implemented. I should like to highlight one point, and that is about professional development ladder and pay structure for teachers. And the government used the voucher scheme to enhance the qualifications of teachers. I agree with that. But then some people said that, why is it that KG teachers have privilege over other primary and secondary school teachers? Why is that the case? Because we are lacking so much behind in terms of salary from the primary and secondary school teachers. And also, our learning is tied to the voucher scheme and we are given a deadline to complete our study. And we are not very flexible in our study. So the subsidy is given out not based on the needs of teachers, rather on the structure of the KG. The learning subsidy is not really taking care of the needs of teachers, and that is unfair to teachers. Now, the society is progressing and teachers have to continue or further the study to meet with the needs of the society. But then the government is only implementing short-term learning subsidy and it is not a long-term scheme. I don't think the government should only focus on training of teachers for certificates and degree. They should, we should learn different skills. And furthering our studies, it should be a long-term goal. And then that the subsidy should not come in a misplay approach. And that doesn't do any good to the development of teachers. So I think the government should think more on this point. Teachers further their studies, but they don't have a pay structure which can, which is sort of which can help move them upwards in their profession. The, the government rather spends four hundred and eighty million dollars to subsidize outstanding local students to study overseas. I think it's a approach of putting the cart before the horse. And why don't you spend resources on local education, say subsidizing degree courses, undertaking research on local, localized research? So I urge the government to develop a professional development ladder so that the teachers would further their studies. Next one, Miss Lam Yin Ping. I am an early childhood education worker and I'm also a parent, a mother of two children. So I'm speaking in my two capacities here. I support fifteen-year free education. I support one of the eight proposals presented by the Alliance. And that is one, improving the staff complement of KGs so that full subsidy is given to whole-day and half-day KGs. And actually, a lot of the KG teachers work till late hours. And then they have, still have to work on KG work when they return home and they are forced to neglect the needs of their own children. And the reason is because not they're, they're not hardworking or they're inefficient, is because the KG teachers work very hard to take care of the students. And the whole-day KG's opening hours is from eight AM to six PM. And then we have also extended hours service that lasts till seven PM or eight PM. So when the students get off school, then we will have time to design our curriculum and make preparations. Now, because from eight AM to six PM, we don't have any spare capacity to prepare our curriculum. And we also have to take care of academic matters and liaise with the parents. And also, many KG teachers are furthering their studies in the evening. So full-time, whole-day, full-time teachers in whole-day KGs, we work at least ten hours a day and we are very exhausted. So when we return home, we are so exhausted physically and psychologically. And we don't have a lot of time to communicate with our children and build a good relationships. And that is a problem very common to KG teachers. The, the government has been encouraging a parent-teacher association. But for our KG teachers, we, we can't do that. And how can we set a good example to the parents we serve? Well, there is a saying that we won't allow our children to lose at the starting line. But as a KG teacher, let's, I would just advocate that we don't want to, our children to lose because we have the poor KG education. So I urge strongly that we should improve the staff establishment of KG teachers, we should, we should hire more assistant teachers. We should also make good planning of our staff to hire more clerks to lessen the administrative work of the teachers. Next one, Miss Zheng Wing Yi. Secretary, Chairman, Piers. Good morning. I'm from a Shamshebo KG. And I hope to express my views to the government. Today, I hope that they can listen and take heed of our views. I am very disappointed by the CE's policy address because it neglects KG education. I propose the free fifteen-year education be provided and also the demands of the Alliance. I also speak on behalf of the whole-day KG parents. Now, in my school, there are over a hundred parents. And in the campaign, One Voice, One Demand, we received the signature of five hundred parents. Why that number? When we have only a hundred parents. It, so it goes to show that the parents have been very active to solicit support from their friends to support our cause. So it seems, it, it, it goes to show that people from different strata of the society are in support of our cause. And it shows their resolve to fight for fifteen-year free education. Take my school as an example. Most of the parents are grass from the grassroots. They are double-income families mostly and they have to work. If not, they can't make their ends meet. Now, under the existing voucher scheme, the subsidy for whole-day and half-day KGs is the same and is grossly unfair to a whole-day KG. So I hope that the government can square, face squarely the needs of the whole-day KGs to, so that students in whole-day KGs can get full subsidy and that the, the parents can put their mind at ease. And also, I hope that the administration increase the number of whole-day KG places and support the disadvantaged families. Lastly, I hope the administration should implement the fifteen-year free education as soon as possible. Next one, Miss Song Wei Ping. Good morning. As what the secretary said, the community is well aware that fifteen-year free education can ensure that the next generation is given good opportunity to basic education. So I think the government should commit immediately to providing fifteen-year free education. I know that the EDB will set up a committee on KG education. And it will deal with long-term development policies and planning of KG education. Now, this should cover teachers' long-term development, quality assurance of KG education. I also want to emphasize that policies on promoting localized education research is also important. Because of the change in society and the changes in family structure, localized research is very important. Parents spend some, a big sum of money usually on English language teaching materials. We know that research in that area is very important. A fifty-year-old doctor said to his son, would you take care of me when I grow old? And then the son said, no, you will have died by then. And then there is this mother who said that, well, you should work harder on your schoolwork. The doctor said, yes, I will work hard on my schoolwork. But then you should also work hard to earn money. And I want to give birth to a daughter and you should take care of my daughter for me as well. So in face of these examples, we know that localized education research is vital. So what are the education policies which can address problems brought about by a changing society today? There were two incidents where the children killed their parents and it, both of them had to do with children play or young people playing games on the computer. Now, we don't want to see, if we don't want to see a child watching his parents playing games on the computers. And if we don't want to see that, say, ten out of fourteen students in a classroom have emotional problems, what should we be doing? What kind of support should we be giving to our teachers? Life education starts from a very early age. And we should devote more resources and we should do more research on local education. And this is something that we must embark on. We should promote the passion of the teachers in teaching students. So the committee to be established should conduct in-depth studies on local research topics and devote substantial resources on teachers. Please come and invite the teachers to join your committee. Next one, Miss Chan Kahlai. Good morning, Secretary, Chairman. I'm a KG teacher and I'm also a trainer for KG teachers. But I also want to speak in my capacity as a Chinese person living in Hong Kong and a future parent. So I strongly support fifteen-year free education. I agree with the United Nations Convention on Children that the children have the right to live and be educated and we should work for the best interest of children. So as an ECE worker, I want to speak on behalf of the children and to fight for their right to good education. As an ECE worker, my experience and research tell me that children, was the age zero to six is an important period for the growth and learning of children. And we workers are very committed. And we are prepared to devote a lot of our resources and time to educate children. Every day, we would kneel down and talk to the children. We don't mind exhausting our physical health and we don't, and we are happy to play, sing and dance with our children.
Um, teachers don't have any spare lessons in the day and in the evening, we have to continue with our studies. And we have to pay a lot of price uh, in our teaching work. On holidays, we would give up uh, opportunities to uh, socialize with our friends and relatives. We have to um, uh, hold meetings and work and and this is all for the better education of our children. And what is the government doing? What price is it willing to pay? I don't think they are doing enough and they're not committed to um KG education. We have been working hard for so many years and we don't want any return. But then we don't want the government neglecting the needs of the young children. We hope that the administration should implement fifteen-year free education. For the delay on the part of the government, we are very unhappy. And from a macro point of view, actually, investment in uh, childhood education is most precious and important. In the twentieth century, uh, we need quality childhood education. Now, from various aspects, we should implement fifteen-year free education as soon as possible. When the government is working so much to protect uh, local babies from having uh, and and having baby milk formula. We should also at the same time implement fifteen-year free education as soon as possible. And uh, implement the proposals um, raised by the alliance.
Next, Mr. Zhang Chinto, Chairman-Secretary.
Uh, Piers, good morning. I'm also engaged in ECE education. Hong Kong uh, upholds knowledge, expertise. And it's again same goes to the education sector, banking sector and so on and so forth. And the KG teacher profession is not something unfamiliar. Now, what is professional teachers now? From the perspective of the parent, teacher and so on, uh, our demands for professionalism change. Let me cite an a simple exam sample. Uh, I'm sure every one of us have visits a fast food shop. Initially, our demands were that the the prices of the food were cheap and is fast. But then can we uh, are we satisfied with such demands? Now for say, uh, fast food chains like Cafe Decores, McDonald's and so on. They no longer just attract patrons uh, by their faster service. And they are also attracting customers through their quality service. Now, the same goes for KG teaching. The KG uh, should also provide quality education so that children can adapt to primary school uh, uh, soon. And also they have to take care of children with special educational needs. And also uh, family support and so on. All these aspects have to be taken into account. I used to uh, work in the field and I have dealt with many um, uh, child cases of children. I once recalled uh, that parents shared with me their experiences. And there is this remark that uh, impressed upon me that the parent said. Uh, although his child child is very bad and the the KG teacher has has been very passionate in teaching him. But they there is nothing much they can do. Now, why is that the case? The uh, child is an autistic child and the teacher doesn't didn't know uh, how to best to teach him. Well, this case was just the tip of the iceberg. And actually, the number of students with special education needs is increasing year after year. And there is a need for the teachers to continue um, their education to acquire knowledge in that field. And they may have to acquire a degree course uh, in that regard. Now, I think if we uh, implement fifteen-year free education, then it will provide a better environment for teachers to advance with the times and become professional teachers. Now, that is going to benefit the teachers, the schools and the society as a whole.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Lam Chui Ling. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I speak on behalf of the Hong Kong Federation of Education Education Workers. I don't want to dwell on the theories and how important KG education is. Because you must have listened a lot and the sector has already spoken a lot. But still, Secretary, I want to tell you what we are demanding. Now, Mr. Ng, you have always been saying that you would like to deal with the urgent businesses. In fact, there are three points that we should give priority. First of all, um, set up the committee on KG education so that we can have fifteen-years free education. I'm not worried because a lot of our elites will be monitoring the work of this committee. And for the legal and the media, they will also be monitoring the work of this committee. Now, this should be given the first priority. Now, Mr. Ng, you haven't um, introduced uh, this um, uh, work. And therefore, we have got two other areas that should be given priority as well. Now, Mr. Ng, you must immediately um, enhance the fee to seventeen thousand five hundred and ten dollars. You should increase the face value of the PUPS as soon as possible. And also the fee ceiling should also be increased so as to ease the burden. Well, um, last week, Ms. Starry Lee um, and ex-colleagues said that uh, only seven percent of the GDP is being spent on education. Now, so she's urging you to spend more. Now, Mr. Lam Guo Hong has also said that we should fight for more resources. And he's implying that there won't be any filibustering. So please apply for the funds before end of April. You've got so much support, but why are you still dragging your feet? You'll be missing the golden opportunities. What are you waiting for? So please give it priority. Certainly, what about the salary of the teachers at the frontline? You must restore the salary scale so as to retain the staff. Under the PUPS, there are privately-run KGs which have been converted into nonprofit-making KGs. For their rent, I think you should apply your wisdom to take care of that. Quality KG education will depend on the quality of teachers. It will make or break it. So if we have got, if you want to have a successful policy, we have to rely on you, Secretary. So you are the most important person. We are ready. So Secretary, are you ready? If you're ready, then let's go ahead. What else are we waiting for? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lam. Next, Ms. Li So Cheng. Um, I'm a principal of a whole-day KG. I've been in the sector for over twenty years. I support each request of the alliance. I hope that the administration will be implementing the fifteen-year free education policy. There are two points that I want to comment on. There is recognition of teacher qualification. We should also do away with the PUPS so that we have full subsidy for KG education. For many years, the KG teachers have been working very hard. They are trying to enhance themselves. The administration has ignored our requests and our needs. In the past, we used to play the role of supporting the families. Time has changed and in fact, all the pre-primary education units are already providing a childcare service up to the requirement of the Education Bureau. So we have been playing a dual role, educational as well as life education. So that the young children learn how to take care of themselves. We are never satisfied with a basic qualification. Myself and other colleagues well before the launching of the PUPS have already completed um, the certificate course. And we have even started the degree course. This is because we are dedicated to the job. But when compared with degree holders in primary education and secondary education, our pay is very different. Is it because we are tending to the needs of the younger children and so we pay the least? Uh, for primary and secondary school teachers, they have a pay scale. We have been working very hard to enhance ourselves, but we haven't given due recognition. This is affecting the morale of the teachers. You are not doing justice to the KG pupils. It's difficult to employ uh, to recruit teachers. Because school leavers will not be confident to join us, saying that they don't have a bright future. We haven't got any uh, security for the teachers. And so we are having a high rate of wastage. And since the launching of the PUPS, whole-day kindergartens have been treated unfairly. For half-day schools and whole-day schools. They. Have got a difference of one point eight million dollars in terms of the resources they are getting. So we have a high rate of wastage. Secretary, you've been emphasizing the need to enhance our human capital of Hong Kong. So please implement. Um, the policy and please also give recognition to our professionalism. Uh, this. Discard the PUPS. Make sure that there will be adequate subsidies for the KGs. And introduce a qualification framework for teachers so that we have good KG education. Thank you. Thank you. Next, Ms. Che Kam Lin. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Secretary, colleagues. I'm a parent of a KG pupil. I have put down my signature to the signature campaign. So I'm well aware of the each request of the alliance. The majority of the parents have to um, have double income so as to get sufficient income to pay for mortgage or to pay for the rent. I don't think we need half-day schooling only. Three hours would not be adequate to help the young children to compete with those from the whole-day schools. And in fact, um, young children can learn knowledge. They learn to read and write. And then they can also practice what they have learned under the guidance of teachers. They can also learn how to live together with their peers and explore the world. I don't think parents are trying to shake the responsibility when they have to go to work. If they can um, leave their children in the hands of professional teachers, it's much better than leaving them with their domestic mates or their relatives. Especially when we learn that there are um, accidents uh, or negligence. When the young children are taken care of by their relatives or the domestic mates. So uh, going to a KG would be best for the children. So the working mothers don't have to worry and they can um, continue to go to work and maintain the um, families of keeping. I think whole-day KG um, means that we have long hours and then there would be fewer holidays. In this way, you can actually help the parents. Moreover, when the weather is bad, like when we have a black rainstorm signal or when there's a number three typhoon signal, the um, KGs are still open. Uh, in fact, to be frank, parents can't stay away from work, go early or come to office late despite the poor weather. So we have to keep such um, KGs so as to cater for the needs of the parents. There are different needs of uh, in the community. We must have a comprehensive policy. The PUPS does help with the parents' expenditure on education. But then we are spending more and more on education as well as other types of expenditure. Hong Kong is a society of diversity. The government encourages um, mothers to go to work. So we need the whole-day KGs to help the working mothers. We need different kinds of schools. When the government considers the implementation of the fifteen-year free education system, please make sure that you keep the whole-day kindergartens because they do serve special needs. Um, for whole-day kindergarten pupils, uh, despite the PUPS, uh, have to pay dearly for the remaining part of the fees. So please do not try to ask the parents to pick up the rest of the bill. I think you must try to help the parents ease the burden. So there must be a whole, uh, there must be full subsidy for KG education and please have fifteen-years free education. Thank you. Next, Ms. Wong Shu Ying. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I have been with the uh KG education sector for thirty years. I won't repeat the eight points in the fight for fifteen-year free education. We always tell stories to young children so that they can learn. Now, let me tell the story of Siufan. Um, Siufan's story is entitled, "Miss Lam, my teacher." I'm in the upper KG. I like to go to school every day because of Miss Lam. Miss Lam smiles a lot. She's very good. Uh, she knows everything, storytelling, singing, dancing, drawing, cooking. She's good at science, sports, English, Pudonghua, computer. She knows everything. Every day she learns, uh, she teaches us everything. We are very happy. And we have also got a lot of teaching kids. We have um, storybooks and we have a lot of aides to help us to develop our services physically. She takes us out for outings and sometimes she would also go together with my parents. In fact, um, we have a lot of festive celebrations with birthday parties. Well, to be frank, um, for the food prepared by the helpers in the kitchen, they're really yummy. I have a lot of friends at the KG. Miss Lam also gives us a lot of tasks to complete. After we're finished, uh, she will praise us for having made progress and doing good job. We learn to take care of ourselves. We respect each other. We are persons of integrity. We're grateful and we are forgiving. But uh, sometimes I can't understand certain things and I cannot complete certain tasks. But she'll give me all the encouragement. Every day I have a lot of homework to do, but I'm still good at it and I'm happy. I have to write weekly journals and I have to write my newspaper reports. Miss Lam praises me for being uh, very observing. And she has also invited me to tell stories to my peers. And she asks the other pupils to give my big hand to encourage me. I do make mistakes, but she will give me opportunities and she would never scold at scold me at the top of her voice. When I'm slow, she will encourage me and ask me not to get anxious. When I fall ill, when I'm unhappy, she will call me and she will pray for me. Sometimes I'm unhappy. I do get such moods, but she will always discover that. And then she'll hold my hands, she will hug me, she will talk to me. I'm really happy. Well, in short, I like to go to school every day. I would like to see Miss Lam every day. I like her, I love her. And in fact, do you know she likes me a lot as well, Miss Lam? How many Miss Lam's do we have in the KG? Of course, teachers do more than what has been observed by the young children. We need quality teachers to quality KG education and then we have healthy development for young children. The administration must plan again. There must be adequate resources. Then we have a stable working force and then we have flexible manpower deployment, good school environment and also the good uh, support facilities. And then we'll have a a hope. Um, God, we're grateful. Uh, we would like to thank you so that the secretary will really understand how urgent this matter is. And she he will be determined to take it forward. Thank you. Next, Ms. Chung Kam Ling. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, colleagues. I've been with the sector for twenty-seven years and I've been uh, dealing with administrative work for twenty-two years. And we've been fighting for the interests of the young children for many for many years. We have witnessed many changes. Five years ago, the voucher scheme was introduced. Well, um, the subsidy is given to teachers and schools, uh, less for whole-day schools than half-day KGs. The working hours for whole-day KGs are also long and therefore we have a high rate of wastage. We haven't got a stable workforce and we can't develop ideally. As part of the KG educational sector, we know that we have to have a sound foundation. We want to have quality education for our future generation. And to do that, we must have the best teacher training for KGs. And then we can provide for the best curriculum for the KG pupils. But I don't think we should um, pay for the elites to be trained overseas. Now, look at our teaching force. Uh, we've been working very hard, we're very positive, dedicated, we're enhancing ourselves all the time. A lot of us have already got the certificate in early childhood education. Many are also bachelor degree holders or even master degree holders. So I think we need to model our um, salary scale on that of the primary school teachers and secondary school teachers. The administration must also subsidize fully so that we can retain the right caliber. And we must have a development um, ladder for the teachers. And we must get resources to have supply teachers and we have to localize our curriculum. We have a, we must have localized research as well. Thank you. Next, Ms. Yip Waika.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Secretary, members and also colleagues. I'm a year-two student in IED for early education.
We haven't got a timetable for fifteen years of free education. I'm surprised. I'm disappointed. And I think the Education Bureau uh would like to um have the attitude of paying the minimum wage and also um trying to adopt a market perspective in dealing with such matters. This is humiliating, disappointing. I'm studying for early education because I'm committed towards early education. I would like to accompany the young children when they grow up. But then for us to enhance the quality, for us to study further, it is not an easy road. Um, on the nineteenth of March, a teacher spoke here and she spent three hundred thousand dollars to have continuous education. We are teacher students. We would like to study further, but then for such a sum, it is a um very huge sum. I don't know why the Education Bureau would rather choose a few elite students and spend hundreds of millions of dollars so that they can go overseas to study than assisting us. We'll be lagging behind and this would jeopardize the um career development of K G teachers. I hope the administration will attach more importance to us. We are willing to take care of the young children and teach them, but who is there to give us resources to train us, to help us? Therefore, I would urge the administration to put aside more resources, help such um teacher students like us. We are willing to uh work hard for the future of our future generation. Moreover, there must be localized research. While carrying out my study, uh we have to um talk about the development process uh of our children. But usually, the literature comes from overseas, like in Taiwan, they have a lot of research. We were amazed. Now, Hong Kong is supposed to be a cosmopolitan, but we found that um we didn't have a lot of research being done on young children. For overseas research, I don't think they suit the local situation because we have a very different social and cultural background. And therefore, we are not able to understand fully what um it is like for a young child to grow in Hong Kong. So I hope that the Hong Kong government can have more resources so that we can develop localized research in Hong Kong. Give us more resources so that we can understand the local picture and then we can help the young children. To conclude, I support the eight requests of the Alliance. And I hope that in two years' time, we can have a timetable for fifteen year free education. We can't afford to wait anymore. Next, um Ms. Wong. Um, Secretary, Chairman, Members, Colleagues. I'm about to join the teaching force in K Gs. And in fact, people have criticized us uh for being immature because I was born uh in the nineteen nineties. I can't choose uh to not to be part of one. But um but then I'm not immature. I'm not vulnerable. Well, just like the young children that we are teaching, they don't have a choice as to in which year, in what environment they are born. But in fact, every child should have the uh right to choose for their future. I'm a post ninety generation member. I think it is important to a fifteen years free education. I am committed towards a K G education. I support the eight requests of the Alliance.
I think the pre-primed education should be incorporated into basic education. Many research shows that from ages zero to six, uh learning is very important in the process. And it's very important for children to learn at this stage. So for every child, uh his basic right is to go to school. Some people are rich and they can select schools, but some are poor. It's true that they don't have a chance to go to school. If the government attaches importance to pre-primed education, there should be fifteen year free education to ensure that the rights of the children are safeguarded. Secondly, for the long term, for the voucher scheme, it cannot satisfy the needy families which can get a fair, reasonable treatment. For the voucher scheme, it says that it will uh respond to the markets in a flexible way. So early childhood education becomes a commodity. So the government should have a long-term planning uh blueprint, especially teacher, training and also human resources deployments. So that that should be a comprehensive and sound policy. So I urge the government to implement fifteen year free education so that all the children have a fair chance to receive education. Then we can regard uh the core values of early childhood education, that is, is children-based. Next, Ms. Wen Heilum, Secretary, Mr. Chairman, Counselors, Co-workers. I'm a second-year student of Child Care Service and Social Studies of IV. I agree with the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. Now I want to highlight several points. First, governments should reduce the teacher-student ratio. That's one to fifteen for ages two to six. And the teachers have having heavy workload. They have to use a lot of energy to deal with uh children. Now for the present student-teacher ratio, it includes the senior teachers and principals, but they have to deal with administrative work. And so they may not be in a position to do it frontline. So the ratio should be one to ten for zero to ten and four to six is one to fifteen. It should not include the principals and senior teachers. Then we can have a better ratio. And then we know that psychologically and physiologically, the children can be helped. The government should have a good staffing establishment. And we should calculate the student-teacher ratio. We should only include the teachers. Also, there should be uh the K G teacher qualification structure and ladder. Now the quality of the teachers is not uniform. We should stabilize the teaching force and ensure better quality. We should recognize the qualifications of the teachers. So there should be more places uh for the K G teachers to study. There's should be regular courses and we should aim at uh degree requirements so that we can have a comprehensive teaching force. So the children are the future pillars of society. I hope that the government can implement fifteen year free education so that the K G teachers can have adequate energy and time to deal with uh every children and you can upgrade the quality of teaching. Thank you. Next, Ms. Wong Soo Fang. I'm from the Early Childhood Education Administrators Association. The government should really appreciate the place of pre-primed education. It is said that the sector's views are diverse. It's understandable. For the past forty years, uh the social welfare services and the private sector uh have been responsible for that. Now for the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance, we are talking about the same void, the same action so that we should fully subsidize uh half-day schools and whole-day schools. Now in the two-year transition, we have to increase the voucher value, which can create a central uh training fund. There should be a one-off uh school-based allowance for the schools. And we could also do the review uh as we go along. For the past five years, the schools have to prepare a lot of the paperwork. So that actually the schools become kind of a company or kind of listed company. Have to compile reports, just such like a company giving reports to the shareholders, et cetera. So there should be a scrapping of assessment reports to reduce the burden so that the schools really can become schools. Now for the future, we should look at several aspects. First, comprehensively, teaching and care are both important. So we should have whole-day schooling. And we should take care of with of the children's learning. First, there should be fairness. We should look at the population policy and we should redistribute resources. So we have the these aspirations of the parents. We should attach importance to quality so that uh different children with different talents can really have an equal chance of receiving learning. Third, we have to tighten with the need for development. The population on Hong Kong is aging according to the Census Statistics Department in twenty thirty-nine. For every one thousand adults, we'll take a six hundred and twenty-five children and adults. So that means for the children today, so tomorrow they will have to be responsible for taking care of many people. So we have to have a good foundation today. And fourthly, there should be professional development. As Ms. Chong Wei Ping said, we are dealing with complex society. We need the more time to to train up people, then the trained people can deal with children of different abilities and backgrounds. So the government should learn from the experience of secondary and primary education so that we can train up the teachers of the K G. Now, uh yesterday was was the anniversary of uh the election of C E. Hope that the C E can really implement fifteen year free education. Thank you. Ms. Chairman Yi, good morning. I'm from the New Territories K G Teachers Alliance. We support the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. I'm a teacher. Secretary, I hope you can appreciate our predicaments. Now, within five years, we have to further study and we have to deal with a lot of assessments, et cetera. So our work pressure is very great. And we deal with children and we have to deal with families and we have take care of the children. So the workload is very heavy. Actually, we haven't grumbled. But what is frustrating is that for the basic pace scale, it has been scrapped. So the teaching force is is really suffering from that. And the prospect is not certain and some teachers actually have left. So the wastage is quite serious. The government should really attach importance to the wastage of K G teachers and also our pay scale. We should reinstate the pay scale. We should fully subsidize the direct the pays of the teachers and we should recognize the status of teachers. Thank you. Next, Ms. Chan Yiwah. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, Co-workers. I'm from the New Territories K G Administrators Concern Group. We agree with the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. The submission has been referred, members. I don't want to repeat the points. Now, I would like to strongly urge the government to fully implement fifteen year free education. In the transition, the government should deal with teachers' pay, voucher scheme and rental allowance, et cetera. There should be mitigating measures. And within two, these two years, studies should be completed and we should turn over a new leaf. We have been waiting for decades. We don't want to wait anymore. Hope that the C E can adhere to his election manifesto. And we should attach importance to training up of talents. So we should reinstate the pay scale of K G teachers and also continuous development. And you should implement a free education. Thank you. Next, Ms. Yu Yingying. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, good morning. I'm from the Kindergarten Parents Group. We agree with the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. Now, for the policy address is rather disappointing. The election manifesto of Mr. Si Wai-Lung said that he would expeditiously implement a free K G free education, but now he has not made good his promise. He said that he's just studying the matter. It's kind of procrastination. We are rather disappointed. Pre-primed education is very important for the children. They will learn different skills, like social skills and another skills and also academic skills. So this is uh one rung of the ladder, which is very important. And for the voucher scheme, for half-day schools and whole-day schools, they are the same. But for the whole-day schools, uh the students do not have a fair treatment and it's not quite helpful for them. So the government is having massive surpluses. So the government should really have a greater commitment. The parents really hope that the government can listen to parents' aspirations to implement fifteen year free education. Thank you. Next, Ms. Wong Wing-Sue. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, Counselors, good morning. I'm on behalf of the K G Parents Alliance. We agree with the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. The government has not implemented this plan. I'm rather dissatisfied. I'm a parent of two children. In twenty eleven, I took part in a protest at the government headquarters to fight for free education. Now my elder son is at primary school. Now I have come to the New York School Complex. I'm fighting for free education. For my uh little kid, he's completing kindergarten. But hope that the C E can make good his promise in the election manifesto so we can have fifteen year free education so that people can be reassured and have confidence in the government. Thank you. Next, Ms. Joanne Fong. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, Co-workers. I'm a representative of the Pre-Prime Education Administrators Concern Group. We support the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. The submission at paper number twenty-two is self-explanatory. Now, uh, Hong Kong government has application to implement free education. Concerning K G is also a kind of respect for the uh practitioners. The qualifications of K G teachers has been upgraded. We have been having diploma courses and degree courses, master courses and even the PhD courses. But the government wants to allocate four hundred and eighteen billion dollars so that the pre-graduates can study overseas. But how about the present K G teachers? The government neglects the long-term planning in terms of training them. You should attach importance to the interests of the K G teachers. The government should allocate more resources and implements the aspirations of the Alliance. Now, on the nineteenth of this month and today, a lot of people have expressed aspirations. Please note that. Thank you. Ms. Lam Shiu Wah. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, Counselors. I'm speaking on behalf of the Parents Concern Group for free fifteen year free education. We support the eight-point aspiration of the Alliance. The policy address is rather disappointing. The C E in his election manifesto said expressly that he would attach importance to training up of talents and he would implement uh K G free education. But this empty talk, he has not made good his promise. He said that he has to study feasibility. It's kind of delay. It's rather frustrating. Government has massive surpluses and also reserves. The government should make a greater commitment. So the parents hope that government can listen to the voice of the parents to implement fifteen year free education. Thank you. Next, Ms. Ah Li Wing Yi. I'm from the P C O H K Taiwan Nursery School, P T A. The government should implement a fifteen year free education. Half-day schooling is not enough. A lot of families have working parents. So we should not just give the care of the children to the the old grandparents. Now, whole-day schooling is comprehensive and so the working parents can rest assured. For my uh elders, the daughter, uh she's working. Well, I have, uh, she's, she's, she's suffering. Now my daughter has given, her care is given to the school and it's good. Now for my little boy, uh he's at whole-day school. So the whole-day schooling should be fully subsidized. Now, whole-day schooling should get more resources. The government should not neglect uh whole-day schooling for K G. And the government should make reference to primary and secondary schooling. So there should be different calculations for different sectors. Now for the teachers, governments say that the basic qualification is diplomas. But actually, for many teachers, they have exceeded the basic qualification. But actually, for many teachers, they have exceeded the basic qualification. They have got bachelor's degrees or even master's degrees. Why is it that the salaries cannot be safeguarded? Why is it that there's a difference between the K E G teachers and the primary and secondary school teachers? Mr. Eding said that the salaries are from seventeen thousand dollars and also about fifty, and also more. But actually, many K E G teachers have less salaries. So we should promote and upgrade the salaries of the K E G teachers so that the diploma holders and the degree holders can have appropriate salaries. We should respect the teachers and we should attract and retain the talents. So I support the eight-point aspiration of the alliance. Next, Ms. Lo Siu-Yin. Mr. Chairman, Secretary, Counselors, coworkers. A lot of people give a lot of inputs. And previous speakers have mentioned a lot of points. We are talking about the basic requirements for the K E G teachers. Actually, society is progressing rapidly. And for administrators of the K E G, they set their school-based curriculum and they review the curriculum to see if it is appropriate. And this is very basic to nurture children and to help them grow. So we need the help of K E G teachers. Continuing education for K E G teachers is very important. Now, for the entry requirements, it's diploma. Actually, many K E G teachers have got higher qualifications. But for the C E, for the first term, it was more than ten years ago. So we should review the continuing education of the K E G teachers. The government should have full subsidy for that. The government should make reference to the primary and secondary schools. And the further study, subvention of the public sector schools can be made to reference to. And you should have the ease of burden of the K E G teachers so that we can achieve better quality K E G education to children, the future pillars of society. I urge the government to set short-term, medium-term, and long-term blueprints so that for the short term, the government should fully subsidize the salaries of the K E G teachers. There should be the pay scale reinstated for the medium term. There should be review of the rental allowance of the K E Gs. Now, for fifteen-year free education, the important thing, the third issue is that there's a rental problem for the K E Gs. The government doesn't want to use public money to benefit the real estate developers. The government can really look at the median of the rental. Then can be a median rental allowance. Then the property developers will not benefit.
In the long term, I hope that fifteen-year free education can be provided. Thank you very much. Well, thank you, the deputations and individuals for coming to the meeting and giving your views on fifteen-year free education. Before I ask the members to raise questions, Secretary, would you like to respond to individuals and deputations' views? No, you don't plan to respond now? All right. Now, let's open the floor to questions by members. Would members who wish to speak, please raise your hand? Yes, the list is like this. Okay, please don't leave your seat. Dr. Kenneth Chan, Fernando Zheng, Yip Kin Yun, Albert Ho, Tam Yo Cheung. I suggest four minutes each, including answers and questions. According to section thirty-three A of the Rules of Procedure, if you have a direct or indirect junior interest relating to the matter, please disclose such interest. First, Dr. Kenneth Chan. I don't know what the timetable of the administration is. I don't really, I don't know. No, you don't have anything to declare? No? I hope that I do have an interest to declare in the future because many of us want the government to implement the fifteen-year free education as soon as possible. This is a second public hearing and I attended the last hearing too, to listen to your views. I think the consensus is clear, the eight demands from the alliance. And all of us want the fifteen-year free education to be provided as soon as possible. And that has to do with the quality of our population, children's rise, the future development of the society, and that is important. We must not ignore the problem. And we should pay due attention to the hard work that you have displayed in the past. And we should do more to fight for fifteen-year free education. The Civic Party will be working closely with you to make that request. Last week, my office, I said that my office has initiated a study and I've sent a document to some eight thousand kindergartens in Hong Kong and I've received over a hundred responses to date. And I hope that you can respond as soon as possible so that I can have more statistics to present to the administration. Secretary, my question for you. There is a K E G in Cowon Bay at Emoy Garden. And because the landlord doesn't want to renew the tenancy and the kindergarten was forced to relocate. And what is your view on that sort of matter? Would you be providing a place or venue for the kindergarten which serves over two hundred families? So that's my first point. Second point on the committee to be established. Last week, some people said that it would be headed by Mrs. Moses, Mr. Moses Zheng. And then there is a worry that Mrs. Moses Zheng might not understand clearly our demands and his thinking in the past might also affect the work of the committee. I talked with some friends and we talked about watching the Yes Minister Committee. And then I talked about that whenever a committee is to be established, the right candidate for the chair has to be found and it will ensure that the work will be carried out smoothly. And that is really a joke in England. Now, what is your view, Secretary, on the choice of the chairman for the committee? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Chan, for your question. Now, on the rental, I read the newspaper today and in the past few months, there have been incidents like this. Under existing mechanism, there are some four hundred K E Gs. In fact, three hundred and eighty or close to K E Gs under the rental subsidy scheme. And the scheme has been working very well. We have got eighteen districts. And under the mechanism, we would use the standards of the lands department to make the necessary arrangements. Now, for individual cases, because land is so limited in Hong Kong, incidents like this may happen again in the future. So I would like to find out more about what is happening to this K E G, review to finding a solution for them. Now, as to the choice of the chairman of the committee, I remember I said this last time that this person for the chairman, he should be fair and just and he is well-versed in the, with education matters. And he should be experienced in education matters. So that he, and also he should have commitment to education because the work of the committee is going to last at least two years and there are many working groups and the commitment required is really big. So I hope that the right candidate can be found. You haven't answered my first question. Now, about this kindergarten in Emoy's Garden, what have you done so far? Now, I'll save that for the next round. Second, Dr. Fernando Zheng. I would also, I would like to, first of all, thank you, deputations, parents, principals for coming here. This is a second hearing of the matter. And I know that some friends actually upstairs are watching the meeting. I thank you for coming here. Like last week, I think the atmosphere is rather weird here because the C E promised in his election manifesto that free fifteen-year free education would be provided. Well, it's all in black and white. And the secretary also said that he, that he is, he found the matter practically implementable. And then all the deputations are holding these placards of urging for fifteen-year free education. On the one hand, we have seen the administration making that promise. And on the other hand, the sector is still urging strongly that it be implemented. Why is that such a weird scenery? Is it because we don't, we don't find the administration trustworthy? Now, an education worker said that the educationist sector is like a Cinderella waiting for his prince to come along. Maybe the prince has already arrived and he's just like, he's just, in fact, a frock or a toad. Will that be implemented in the end? Now, this is the second public hearing we are holding and they are repeating the eight proposals of the alliance. And then the administration, including the secretary, hasn't responded to any of these eight proposals. So can you spend just a little bit of time, say, to respond to one of the proposals? And that is drawing up a pay scale and a professional accreditation mechanism. Can you respond to that, Secretary? Thank you, member, for your question. I think this issue is very important and we are confident that we will deal with the matter systematically. Why was that the normative salary scale was scrapped last time? Now, what changes have happened during this period? What is the wastage rate and so on and so forth? These are issues that the committee will look at. Now, we have added on top of those, why are the education workers leaving and where have they gone to? And these are the two topics you're going to look at too. So that would help us in building a more effective salary scale and which is applicable to different service models of K E G education. This is the first thing that we will deal with. The second is about our determination resolve. I must tell you that we are very determined to deal with the matter, professional development. This is something that we are definitely going to deal with. And this is a factor which has made the K E G education so successful these days. I don't want to preempt what the committee is going to discuss, but I want to say here that professional qualifications will be a topic to be covered by the committee. And professional qualifications are important internationally. And I can assure you that these two points will be covered by the committee. Sorry, I have to go to, or rush off to the welfare services panel meeting, so I have to leave now. Our next one, Mr. Yip Kin Yun, Vice Chairman, Chairman. Many friends are here this morning and in the car park. I saw that there was a sea of red. And I think you have been successful in your red dress campaign. If we are united in one voice and one action, we are going to definitely achieve some results. I think there have been changes since the first public hearing. I have listened carefully to the secretary's remarks. And his remarks have been an improvement from those in the past or in the last hearing. You recall that he talked about the feasibility study and so on in the last hearing. And this morning, he said that he would study the feasibility of practically implementing free kindergarten education and the focus is on how. And it seems that he is going back to the point made by the C E in his election manifesto. If this is a result of our demands made last year, and I think that is very encouraging, but we have to be very careful then because we have heard many different versions of the government's position from the election manifesto to the remarks made at the last hearing and also the remarks at this hearing. What is the meaning behind all these changes? I think the secretary has to be held accountable for his remarks today. So, Secretary, can you clarify that my understanding is correct? And that is, you have gone back to the remarks made in the C E's election manifesto and that is to implement free K E G education, full stop. That's it. And that is a very clear undertaking. And if that is the case, please, just, please go ahead and do it. Yes, and we have to look at the name of the committee, which should reflect your latest stance. So, Secretary, I suggest that if after the hearing today, you can issue a press release spelling out clearly your remarks today, then that would be good. If it is written in black and white, then that would put everyone's heart at ease. Secondly, about the short-term measures. Before the committee has made any decisions, there are issues which have to be undertaken by the administration. Say, for the subsidy for half-day and whole-day K E Gs and also raising the value of the voucher. Shouldn't we go ahead with these without waiting for the committee's decisions? So much for my questions. Secretary, any response from you? Thank you, Chairman. In my opening remarks, I would issue a press release afterwards. And I would also put that down in a paper later. Any other response? No? All right, next one, Mr. Albert Ho. Chairman, I would like to thank you once again for the deputations and individuals to come in and restate your views. The Vice Chairman followed up again on the matter and the secretary said that he is going to issue a press release. But then his voice sounds quite reluctant. I would not be encouraged by his remarks. We've been discussing the issue for so long and we've held so many lengthy public hearings and we've listened to so many views from the sector and the parents. Their demands are so loud and clear. And now, what we end up is that I would follow what is put down in the election manifesto and follow suit in what I will be doing. And that is just so basic. And you haven't undertaken when are you going to do it and how you're going to do it. Now, and you are saying that you would be asking the committee to work on the issues. And we don't know yet who are the members of the committee and whether it will really discharge its functions effectively. I really don't have the patience to listen to all these empty talks. As what the Vice Chairman said. Many deputations' parents in the sector have expressed today clearly that you can, there is something that you can tackle immediately now to show your sincerity in resolving the problem. Say, in drawing up a salary scale and strengthening teacher training and how to enhance the openness of the external school review team and promoting localized education research. It's true that all these take time. And the alliance in its a proposals is being very pragmatic and asking you to undertake these within two years. But among these a proposals, there is something which can be tackled immediately. For those members who are concerned about the matter, no matter which political persuasion they are in, they would definitely support some of these concerns. Say, increasing the subsidy for whole-day KGs. So the parents can really choose a whole-day KGs. It's not that you don't have any funds. You should, you are leaving the huge subsidies unspent, and I think you can make use of those funds. Now, in your paper, you said that kindergarten education is not part of basic education, but then you corrected and said that well, it's not part of compulsory education. Now, it's no use having all these empty talks. There is something that you can do immediately. Now, the budget has not been endorsed. And I ask you that you go back and talk to the FS. And dish out the amount in the voucher scheme for whole-day KGs based on the needs of the whole-day KGs. And also, there are other areas you can deal with more flexibly, like the rent subsidy and so on. Now, can you do it? Give more subsidy to whole-day KGs, yes or no? Can I elaborate rather than just merely saying yes or no? Thank you, chairman. Two months ago, we already did two things. We know that in the long term, KGs have pressing needs for toys, installation, purchases, or improvement and minor works. And before we talk to the FS, we will be giving our one-off subsidy in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars to KGs. Secondly, for the teaching or learning subsidy, the scheme has already ended, but we extended to for an extra two years up to the end of twenty fourteen. And third, in our, in the some twenty consultation meetings we held, individual participants have told us that there are different service models. And they have a lot of suggestions on the different aspects of whole-day KGs. And we should discuss with them first before we implementing any new initiatives. So because of this, I don't want to jump the gun and start off with any new initiatives before discussing with the stakeholders. Now, we are asking you to increase the subsidy for whole-day KGs, and I think you are avoiding the questions. Next one is Mr. Tam Yu Chong, Mr. Cheung Kwok Chu and Lan Kwok Hong. Mr. Tam Yu Chong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we are very grateful to have so many deputations, individuals coming to our public hearing. In particular, they all come from the early childhood education sector. I understand that many of them are very experienced educational workers. Of course, there are also some who are about to join the early childhood education sector. I've really been impressed by their very eloquent statements, and their case is fully justified. I firmly believe that the secretary would be moved by their speech. Whether we call it a full subsidy of KG education? Or whether we call it free KG education or free education for fifteen years? You may call it by different names, but then I think we share the same goal. That is, we want to see how kindergarten education will be incorporated into the free education system. Of course, we all understand that for a long time KG education has not been given due significance by the administration. It was only after the return of Hong Kong to China, then the PUVS was hastily launched, and there were lots of teething problems. And it was only in the past year or so that the administration has promised to provide full subsidies, so as to provide free KG education. We understand that for KGs, I think they have got different modes of operation. And they have got different backgrounds, histories. So if we harmonize them, unify them, so as to meet the requests. I do understand that a lot of issues have to be addressed, like the school premises. We don't want to do something which will result in the elimination of the weakest, so to speak. We don't want to drive out certain KGs. I don't think this is what the society would like to see happen. So we need to move very carefully, but then it won't be acceptable. I hope the administration won't give people the impression that she's dragging her feet. So you need to start the work. You need to have an in-depth discussion with the KG sector. And you have to consider the issues carefully. Sometimes you may have a wish to do certain things, but then when it comes to implementation, you will encounter many difficulties. Because if you haven't thought thoroughly, you may encounter certain problems. But still, I think there's some things that you can do first. Say, for example, improving the PUVS. I think this is what parents are looking forward to. So I think you can do this in the first place, since the vouchers are already there. We just want it to be improved. And then the pay for the frontline KG teachers. All along, it has been something that the KG teachers have been fighting for very strongly. So perhaps you should give consideration to this matter and try to introduce a change early. All along, the DAB has been adopting the same position, and I hope that we can send out this message. We'll be joining hands to see how we can see our aspirations being met. I don't mind whether the education secretary is to give an answer or not. Thank you, Mr. Tam. Next, Mr. Cheung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dozens of deputations, individuals have come. They come from KGs. And it shows that the entire KG sector is very concerned about the matter. The secretary has said that in two years' time, he will certainly present an answer to us on the question of fifteen-years-free education. We will keep ourselves optimistic. Generally speaking, when the administration is ready to hold a meeting, it means that the government holds it in a favorable light. So we should be optimistic. And I don't think the administration is implying that the PUVS will be scrapped and then the KGs will be left to their own devices, and there won't be full subsidies. So if we try to think of the matter in a favorable light, then I actually agree with what Albert Ho has said. That is, first of all, well, since it takes two years' time, and by the time the proposals are implemented, we have to wait for three years or four years before we actually have fifteen-years-free education. So perhaps in the initial year or two, we should take the first step. That is, for the voucher scheme, I think you should treat the half-day half-day KGs and the whole-day KGs equally. It won't incur a lot of expenditure, but then we would want to see the first step being taken. Well, we've been told that the rate of wastage is fifteen percent. It is quite rare in the educational sector. In particular, in the case of basic education, if we have a change of teachers all the time, there's no guarantee that the quality can be maintained. Now, many deputations have been saying that they want to see a more uniformed approach towards the pay scale. They aren't actually asking for a pay increase, but then the practices are different. There is a lot of variation. Secretary, you are the secretary for education, but in the past, you used to be social worker. I think you will be aware that for the past twelve years, for social workers, we have had a lot of difficulties as a result of the lump-sum subvention. I'm afraid you are introducing a lump-sum subvention under the guise of PUVS. In both cases, there isn't a pay scale, there isn't a menu ratio. So of course, teachers suffer, and of course, the pupils suffer, and they suffer even more. So for these two issues, you must come back with a reply. You have to give us an answer. Perhaps you need to introduce something like a minimum pay for the KG teachers. If we allow the pay to vary, either people would just leave the force, or there will be a fight for the talents. So secretary, are you going to increase the resources in the short term? And are you going to introduce a pay scale and a menu ratio for the KGs, secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cheung. Perhaps I can try to cite a paragraph that I have read out as an answer to your questions. I did say that despite having two years' time to develop the proposal, it doesn't mean that KG education in Hong Kong will come to a standstill. The committee will certainly consider special initiatives which can be implemented in the short term, in the medium term, and the administration will tie in with their recommendations as much as possible. The second question, I never talked about a minimum pay. In some of the reports of the newspapers, this has been mentioned, but I'm not going to comment on that. I'm a professional. I have my own comments. What is important is look at the rate of wastage. Now, for the Human Resources Association, we have always had figures of double-digit figures for the rate of wastage. In fact, we are very concerned about that. And then for KG education, we've got over ten thousand teachers. And last year, the wastage rate was eight-point-three percent. But of course, individual KGs may face a greater challenge. In the past, it used to be six percent, so the current wastage rate is much larger, much higher. In KG education, we are about life education. And therefore, we are concerned about the wastage rate. Next, Mr. Lan Kwok Hong.
We had a plunder over the powdered formula. That's food. But then KG education is food for soul. So you can't meet the physical needs, you can't meet the spiritual needs, the international needs. Last time, I said that we should ask for the money. This is because John Zhang is supposed to hand out the money. But this year, the education portfolio takes up a smaller share of the budget. Everybody knows this fact. So please make up the shortfall, just restore it to the previous level, and then we can solve the matter. Why? Because it takes a long time to educate people. And yet, it seems that we are uprooting the whole sector. We need to have resources before we can do anything. Now, there are so many people telling you what to do. In other words, we're providing you with political support to secure more money. Now, Mr. Yi may one day throw a banana at you. Now, there are many people asking you to get money. Have you asked for it? And yet, you don't ask for it? He would give the money to you, and yet you don't ask for it, you don't want it, or what? Now, perhaps you would say that we need to save up some money on a daily basis, and then one day we'll save enough. But then, for this government, you have seven hundred million dollars, and you have you have got two thousand nine hundred billion dollars, and then you have another seven hundred billion dollars. And you have got the return from your investment of the fiscal reserves. So the earlier you get money and invest in early childhood education, the earlier you are going to reap the benefits. And the teachers will also suffer if you delay. Now, we need to take care of the elders. We have to take care of the children as if they are our own elderly members, as if they are our own child members in the family. Now, Dr. Nelson Chow has said that he has got the best formula, and he cheers at our proposal. But then he says that there is a lack of consensus. If the administration is not the authority to create consensus, who else is? Do you suppose that I should be the one? I will be driven out of the chamber by the president. Now, you are saying that there isn't a consensus, but you are behind it. Now, we are on our knees, and we are begging you. Have you got the courage? You said that you want to say more than just yes or no, but what you have been saying is that, yes, but. I'm impotent. So perhaps you should say this, yes, but I'm impotent. I'm trying to provoke you, and I hope that John Zhang would also listen in. John Zhang, now, I have to tell you this. Eddie Ng finds it very difficult. Now, Eddie Ng will call you this evening, so don't say no to him, and don't say yes, but. Now, I am showing you support in public. Now, please call the FS tonight, otherwise tell him that Lan Kwok Hong will be hurling a banana at him, certainly. Do you have anything else to say? I just thank members for their comments. Now, last one to speak would be myself. Secretary, fifteen-years-free education, my judgment, my analysis are such that it has got the community-wide support with a consensus. And there is across-the-board agreement in the educational sector. Of course, we have read the electoral manifesto of Siwa Leng. He has promised to do this. And at the two public hearings, the secretary has said that they are determined to provide practicable fifteen-years-free education. We are holding two public hearings. There are almost hundred sixty deputations, individuals. We have heard almost a hundred twenty of them. I found a phenomenon, and I'm worried. It appears that many people don't quite believe in the government's undertaking or the secretary's statements. So there is a lack of confidence. An administration must have the confidence of the people, as Ms. Lam has said. Now, secretary, you are the gatekeeper, so you are the person that will make or break it. Now, fifteen-years-free education, I'm sure the decision rests with you. How are you going to demand confidence from the people? How are you going to restore the confidence of the educational sector? Just now, you said that you would do it ASAP. I know that in April, you're going to set up the committee. But other than that, we fail to see what else has been done or will be done to secure their confidence in you again. Now, you are saying that we should give the committee two years' time so that they can carry out a research. First of all, why two years? I think it is a very, very urgent issue. We have already formed a consensus, and you are determined to do so. For two years, I think it's long enough time to build many public housing units. So that's my first question. Second question, in two years' time, they will present recommendations to you, they will write a report to you. How long would you take to study their report? Their recommendations may not be finding favor with you. So when can we? So when can we expect the implementation? And third question is that the administration has been saying that when a policy is ready, it will be launched. Now, for the eight proposals demanded by them, I think we know them, we've known them for a long time. Some of them must be ready to be launched. So when you study the matter, when you find that some of them are ready to go ahead, can you promise not to wait for two years and then launch them immediately so that we can meet the aspirations of the proponents? Secretary, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we are very grateful to so many of you who have been reminding us all the time. We will keep up a very closely eyes on with you. Let me emphasize this once again. For this 15-year free education, the three-year free KG education will be a very, very important element. It is an important step for our future development. I've already made three points. First of all, it isn't a matter of to do it or not. It's a matter of the practical provision. So we are quite specific on this point. And then, all my team members will be fully involved. And in fact, everybody is very clear about the content of your proposals. Therefore, the timing would be fine. And then, as I have said, we'll give priority to urgent issues. The chair has made it clear. That is, he asked whether we will be launching the issues that are, the initiatives that are ready. Certainly, we'll do it. We will have short-term and medium-term initiatives. But I won't say too much, because we have to respect the committee yet to be set up. Alright, two more minutes to go before we end this session. I don't think we have a second round of questions. Yes, we have another session, though this session is going to end. I would like to thank the deputations, individuals on behalf of the panel for your attendance. If you have got further comments to make, please do so in writing. I think some of you have spoken eloquently. If you have a copy of your, a written copy of your speech, please leave it behind for our secretaries for reference. So I formally declare that the first session has come to an end. The second session will commence at 11:00.